They called this workshop session to order. And first of all, we have on the agenda is Ms. Lisa Bieber with the discovery bill. Feel free, feel welcome. Oh, here's yours.
My name's Lisa Bieber. Back in September, I received a discovery bill. Which time I went and talked to Ms. Arma Phillips and she explained to me that what happened, 2009, the home that we lived in, the land was my parents' name. So we had it debited over at that time to us. We had it surveyed out with the Zelena King's office. We had registered it, registered it, stamped, no delay for taxes. It was always good. Every year I got my thing, I pay my taxes. So in September, I got the discovery bill. I owed fifteen hundred dollars back taxes. I'm nervous.
That's okay. No, it's not.
Which Ms. Phillips told me that what happened when they entered it in, they only entered it in as land and not the house. So I had only been paying the land taxes. And she said, even though it was a clerical error, I still was liable for that fifteen hundred dollars.
So it was a clerical error?
Yeah. She said, well, they get whoever entered it in, entered it in as land and not home anyway. It's like zero, zero, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight.
When did you take possession of the property?
Two thousand nine.
Two thousand nine. So that means there would have been a reappraisal or reevaluation, right?
I have got reevaluation, I think, from two thousand and ten.
From two thousand and ten, you got to reevaluate? Okay.
What do they do when they do a reevaluation? Do they come out and look? Is that what they do?
That's supposed to be a reevaluation on property.
Well, then, what I think, why they can catch it in and not until September? Because I have my papers.
September of this year, Lisa?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. And that's pretty cut and dry, what you just said.
They're not.
Okay. Arma, can you speak to this one up here if you can? I know you've got other things on your mind. Lisa, if you've got anything more to say, you go free to.
All right. Can we do the past and the two thousand and ten revow? Those were done in two thousand and eight. So when that transfer occurred in two thousand and nine, and the house was deleted because it was a split off of her parents' property. Therefore, when they transferred it, and I had two new girls in at that time, the house was deleted. And Ms. Bieber's got her reevaluation card. It showed her value of twenty-five thousand dollars for the land and the home. And so all I did was pick up the house for ten, eleven, twelve, and thirteen. There is no penalty and no interest because I felt it was the tax office fault that her house was deleted. But in the revow, now, it was picked up in two thousand and eight, but it was transferred in two thousand and nine, and that's when it was deleted. So when her bill come out in two thousand and ten, the value was only twenty-five thousand dollars, and that was the way it was. And by law, and then statute one oh five, three ninety-four, I cannot forgive taxes. I have the power with the penalties, and the board has the powers with the penalties. But, well, by law, cannot forgive taxes. That's why I discovered. But Ms. Bieber's did call me and explain to me because we had her down for three bedrooms, two baths. So I corrected that. It was only a two-bedroom, one bath. And also, she didn't put in a heat pump until two thousand thirteen, or two thousand and twelve. So I corrected the two thousand and thirteen year also. And I'm showing a release for tonight of a hundred, a hundred dollars.
Hundred dollars thirty?
Yes. See, the discovery bill is for fifteen hundred, and then there'll be a hundred dollars taken off of it for the risks that I corrected on all those years. But as far as the taxes, I cannot do away with the taxes.
You don't have any questions, Arma, for that?
It's attached to your workshop agenda.
Thank you. Well, one thing that I need, that I feel, say, I understand the law and everything I'm involved with, is, you know, when it comes up that you have to come up with fourteen hundred and thirty-five dollars and some cents at one night?
Always the clerk. You do have the authority, since this was a clerical error, to allow Ms. Bieber's to make a payment. And according to the years, I would assume, to make the payments as according to the years, since it was a clerical error, where it would not be a hardship on her. And that, the board does have that authority.
The discovery bill does not start accruing interest. A discovery bill for this year is no different than a two thousand and thirteen bill that everybody in the county got. And that does not start accruing interest until January seventh, two thousand and fourteen. So there's no interest on this for, well, she got it in September for four months. And I know her tax bill was a hundred and fifteen dollars for ten, eleven, twelve, and thirteen. And all we did was pick up the house.
Now, go through it again about the clerical error. Where the clerical error, I'm not understanding.
In the two thousand and ten revow, we go and visit all the houses in two thousand and eight. And then in two thousand and nine, we did the pricing of the land and price per square foot. And then on January first, two thousand and ten, when it goes on the books. The property was transferred to Ms. Bieber's in two thousand and nine. When that transfer happened, the house got deleted.
Okay.
So when the bill come out for, because it's what happens in two thousand and nine is what you get taxed on in two thousand and ten. So when the tax bill came out in two thousand and ten for a hundred and fifteen dollars, that was just for her land, the house was not there. So our next revow is two thousand and fifteen. While this year, for two thousand and thirteen, Rena and I are going to all the houses. That's when we found on her property record card that there was no house. And by law, I have to discover the taxes, but I did not put any penalties on it. And when we discussed it with Michael Brown at the North Carolina Department of Revenue, with Kim and Greg in attendance, he said I was supposed to put interest on it. And to me, that's no different than putting a penalty on it. Because the interest back in two thousand and ten would be a lot. And it was, with it being our fault, then that's why I didn't put it on with interest.
Did she pay to pay her taxes?
No. She paid them every year. But by statute, one oh five, three ninety-four, I cannot forgive taxes.
I understand.
Because everybody has to pay. Then it's no, it's not fair for anyone else, but that's.
This was actually a court of appeals case, the Tyler Morgan case in Henderson County, that fell off the books. And they called it an immaterial irregularity. And the taxpayer's liable, error is not forgiven. Error is not forgiveness.
And like, those cases went all the way through the Supreme Court?
Court of Appeals, yeah. So we did try.
Yes, we did.
Yeah, I know, this is the first call anybody, I heard on this.
It's not that I'm trying to doubt paying my taxes. I always pay my taxes. It's just fifteen hundred dollars, that's, that's a lot of money, all of them. I mean, it might all be to some people, but it is to me. You know, for three, four months, it's still fifteen hundred dollars. And I would have been paying it if I had known. And I know it was a hundred and fifteen dollars, I should have, you know, know the difference. But when I asked Arma about two thousand and nine, if the house was on in two thousand and nine, and she told me it was. Okay, from when that to that, it was only like a forty-five dollar difference. So I really didn't think, well, you know, the house had been dropped off of it. I didn't think, because it's only a forty-five dollar difference. And I thought, well, since it's not even a April land, so I figured, well, okay, maybe that's why the price was different. Or I would have held on to it.
Because when a property is transferred, all taxes have to be paid at the time it transferred. And so that's when Ms. Bieber's told me that, she said, well, but the taxes will pay. And they will pay up until two thousand and nine.
On the house?
Yes. Because for two thousand and ten is when it got drawn. See, when we do the.
Why don't we get there?
When you, when you do a split.
I understand split.
Okay. You've got parent track.
Right.
Okay. Her parents split this off with their property. That's what, and it becomes a child track, is what we call it. Well, when that track split on the deeds, it doesn't count about a house. What house goes with what property? It's not in the language on those warranty deeds. All it does is transfer the land. Well, when it done that, and you've got a vacant land is five thousand, with the house is five thousand and one.
But now, what I hear it is that the closing, the house was on the property.
Yes.
And in the closing, it had to be written down that the house was on the property.
Yes.
And the taxes paid.
In two thousand and nine.
On the house on two thousand and nine. So who dropped the ball that, from the time that it goes from the attorney's office, which has to make sure it's swiftly claimed with liens and everything else? And then all of a sudden, you know, I understand that in two thousand and nine, they had to pay the taxes that we do on the house and the land.
Yes.
But you see what my question is, is why, why didn't, why didn't it carry forward if the house was already in by the.
Because of the split.
Because of the split? Was it not split at?
And once it's recorded upstairs, then we get the deeds.
Okay.
And we pull them off the next morning and do it. Well, in the split, from July first to December thirtieth, this is two thousand and thirteen year, we're running a two thousand and fourteen program. So when that was done, of course, the girls weren't used to what codes in the system at that time, because they had just started. It was dropped. It went from five thousand and one to five thousand on the codes. And that shows that they could be.
But it did pay, the closing on the property said that there's a house and.
No. In the closing on the deed, it just says land.
So there was no house in the split?
The house was supposed to went with it.
Right.
But it didn't go.
The house got lost in the split.
It got lost in the split.
But at the closing, at the attorney's office, did you buy a house and land? A transfer?
Yes. But warranty deeds do not specify on the house.
I'm going to have to concentrate this. I said. And you know, you know, there's, there's a. See, I'm biased, I know the young one, and I've known her since she was really little. But we need to, I need to have a look at it. And, you know, I think, you know, as a board review, you know, as we are right now, that's what this stands at, is the obligation review, is that you need to understand that you have a right to go on from here. If this board doesn't come up with that, that you want here, and Arma can sure to tell you all about that. She knows about all that works. But I, I need some time on it. I believe it's the thirty day, we have to have response in thirty days.
Yeah.
Okay, Lisa, thirty days only. And to be honest with you, I thought I had a little homework done on this, and I don't myself. And of course, there's two others that aren't here tonight, at this work, at this workshop. And, but they're, you know, the three of us that are here, and one of the three here, I'm saying that I need to, I need to understand more clearly about it before I can come to a decision on it. And what I can decide, what I can't, because there's always something out there, you know, that says, well, you can't do that. But fourteen hundred and thirty-five dollars is probably what it's going to come to. And, you know, it could be, you know, we have had folks that says, well, how many years is that back tax? How many years? Four years back tax?
I can go back, if it's, if it's, on any discovery, the tax office is supposed to go back current plus five.
Right.
But I knew the house was there because I pulled up the property card, and the house was there in two thousand and nine. For two thousand and ten, it wasn't.
So they paid the tax in two thousand and nine with the house on it? And then they get a tax card saying that they didn't have a house?
They got a tax bill.
They got a tax bill that said there was no house?
It shows twenty-five thousand dollars value in two thousand and ten.
Well, that's all I, that's all I have to ask. At least you've got anything more to say to that?
Well, I do have one question. Like, for my two thousand and nine statement, where the house was on it, I think the, the bill was like a hundred and forty-nine dollars and twelve cents. Okay, now my taxes have raised, including my land, I've been paying like five hundred and ninety dollars.
Because of the schedule of values from two thousand and nine to two thousand and ten, the price per square foot went up, and also the price per land went up for the two thousand and ten revow. So that's why all values went up in that revow.
Go up your house value.
Well, this is the old one she adjusted.
On two thousand and nine?
Oh, in two thousand and nine? I don't have it.
I can answer, I can tell you nasty things if I can find it. Okay.
But as of right now, she has a value of, the house and the garage, eighty-seven thousand nine hundred and ten.
Okay. And the land?
Twenty-five thousand.
All right. Gentlemen, you all have any other questions, comments? Lisa, we'll have your decision. We can't vote at this time anyway, and I couldn't vote. I had to come down, okay?
I appreciate this.
All right. And Arma, thank you very much. All right, Lisa, thanks. Now, you see, I want to, one question, Arma, I had, please. This board, an open session coming up at five o'clock, is going to have discoveries and releases. What do you suggest we do if this is contested?
Discoveries, you can't approve those, that, the discoveries on the list is to let you know how much I discover for the month. Discoveries is the taxpayer, tax accessory responsibility to discover. Once I discover, and Ms. Bieber's appealed to me, then I told her what my decision is. Then she has the right to appeal to the board. That's why you have to put it in sentence.
Okay. And then, so what does that mean? We kind of, to do that, we just vote on the discoveries?
We vote on releases.
On releases?
Yes.
That you made a discovery?
Yes. All the discoveries, I automatically have to put on the system.
Right.
Because that's the decision of what I have found, and I think should be taxed. And then the releases is what you approve.
And we've had a lot. I mean, I'm just looking at this for this month.
Yes.
And that's because of the relapse?
Yes.
Okay, you guys have done a good job with that. I know I'm just going to go ahead and then ask.
The majority of the discoveries, the utilities have come in.
Okay. Well, that's good, too.
Yeah, the state.
Okay, that's, that's the only thing I had a question about.
Yeah. I think the first down to do that on the discovery, all of those down to that is nothing but utilities. The values can't be done. Those are the discovery bill that I had to send out to them. And then the rest, I will complete, and Bieber's on down to Louis Davis.
Okay. I'm sitting on here too, right here, this P U B poll out. What is that about?
President's say.
Yeah.
If they're not following the plan, and I don't have the information, they get a discovery.
Okay. That's part of the audit?
That's part, I have to audit and take to those every year.
Right. All right, good. Well, that's about all I got. Gentlemen, anything? Thank you, Arma.
Thank you.
No, lock your car.
I'll try not to.
Well, we do have thirty days on that decision, maybe, so we need to make sure we keep that in mind for reaction when we are able to do that. Okay, so that's the one I have to add on there for, for any comments with my. With that, one of the things that I'd like first to, we could, from this standpoint, is have a brief discussion with the counties. My ideas, I know that it seems that everything that we went through with regard to that of trying to come up with a contingency for the court of court shutdown, swing down, whatever it was, and then had a decision as a board to go in front of a hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars in the event that the federal government did not come with the monies. And I don't want to be a pessimist about it, in some states, we just worry too much about it. I had people, after that meeting, as a matter of fact, that meeting, we decided that we had the money to pay forward, to have childcare standards up, and said, well, that wouldn't be really, that wouldn't be. I, you know, so I had made a decision based on what I thought, but that's okay, too. But the thing that it is, I still have concern about what's going to happen in January, and then the second drop, the hand or the fed. One of the reasons I bring it up, what can we use a board to anticipate anything coming up like that? I mean, it's not, because we got caught real short since, because I started asking the question pretty early about, well, how's it going to impact our county? And lo and behold, we couldn't find out that it has a great impact on our county.
Absolutely. A lot of the information that was coming out in the beginning, it wasn't very clear as to how that was going to trickle back, you know, from state North Carolina, and what they were anticipating. And then probably, you know, a couple weeks into it, state North Carolina's came out and basically said, how you doing, you on?
Right.
And then that was decided back to where the counties had to, and the counties all across the state had to step up and say, okay, this is where we're going to have to draw the line and make some hard decisions. You're exactly right, January fifteenth and into fifteenth is the next date that we are looking at. We have to anticipate and fully expect that it's going to happen. Again, we have to prepare for the worst-case scenario. And obviously, help to the base. So as we're moving forward, and it's something I want to have some discussion with the board on, is to give an understanding moving forward, January, anybody who's part of it moving forward January, we don't know. But that's the deadline that we've basically been given, so we have to anticipate the same thing would happen then. Because there's a more long-term solution to replace that office.
Well, one of the questions that I really have about that is, is I know that we had approval of a hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars. And I don't, you know, the action that we would have to take with regard to that, and I do not, about going, you know, saying that that's withdrawn. And the way that that money came about was, it was from the fund balance.
Yes.
And then, you know, we go in and revert that back into the fund balance, if that's the procedure we have to do as a board, then we have to have some kind of plan. As hard as it is to try and have a contingency fund anytime, you know, this comes up, we don't need to talk again.
Mike, if it happens again, and there's a good possible failure, then it will. All over snow, the county can't support its own, right on and on.
No, we can't.
No. It, it would break the bank. You couldn't haul enough money in and earn back to the place. Why waste a hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars at the beginning? That's, you stick it to white hot, and tell it, call it a sue, that's going, cutting off at the beginning, and we've got the hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars to do.
Yeah, I understand where you come from then, Bill, too. But then I look to the childcare issue, that's one that I had no idea of. And there are businesses I know, this county, another one, that if you're, you don't have a job here, and you pay to go to work, you're fired.
Mama used to take me to corn fields, set me down on our apple tree, and I focused with the bees, but I keep on going, just about. And that's why.
But these people, letting that to the world.
Well, that's, that's these people who are part of Beverly to make a rain. It's, it's tough. I may be hard and cruel, but that's just the way I see it.
And you know, and what I'd like to see is do as a board, you know, regardless of, you know, how you might feel about it. And I, I know, I know, I know how you felt about it before, Bill, in our respect. But if we're going to have a contingency plan, then we need to let folks in this county know that the county's not going to be doing this and that either. Because besides a hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars that showed up in the newspaper, there was already the money that we put up for the month of September, that was a state. And a dollar amount of that, I never got. See, what it works is, we have to pay it in, and then the good government, you know, I mean, the federal government itself, or the federal government through the state government, has to go and pay, reimburse us for that we put out front. And we go out and put it out front, and the biggest scare that I had as a board member was, is that when they finally quote-unquote come up with a solution, was when we're going to start? Were they going to go back retroactively into October one? Or were they going to go and say, this day, August? So with the county, the fact that this county would have eaten that, too.
The county would rate a bench, supporting a two hundred and fifty-something thousand dollars, because we probably got the most.
Absolutely. So that's, that's, that's what's an issue. And I don't know if there would be a plan or something that we can do somehow or another. And you know, they say, oh, this and that will happen. They'll, they'll come up with something, you know, that. But we can't guarantee it. We have to sit here with no money, and we go and take it out of the fund balance, then we find ourselves not even borrowing, because we don't have fund balance. And you have to draw up a fund balance, and then you've got somebody stringing that you put a fund balance together. So we have to understand, if it comes to it, and the county is not going to pay those subsidies ahead, because the county's not going to pay for those services until, everybody in Grand County, if the government dries up, the services, Grand County runs.
Right, well.
And what would be the essential services then?
A lot of the programs that you're talking about, that we may have had, had the obligation to fund from October first, well, I'd implement some of those as a little bit harder than others, because it depends on how the state decides to release the dollars. If, like we talked about in the budget meetings, some of those programs were appropriated, you know, this, we're in the first or second year of that appropriation, so they still had to fund it. Many times, as we're trying to prepare for any upcoming shutdown event like this, we're handicapped in our responses in some ways, because we need to hear from the state as to what they're willing to do to cover. As it was stated in, in our meetings, some states did sway, they said, hey, keep your programs up, the state's got it. North Carolina didn't. A lot of people were waiting. So many times, each response is going to be dictated by what's being allowed at the state level. And in this case, I mean, it was changing daily at times. So being prepared, whenever we came together, we identified the programs, we. So, being prepared, whenever we came together, we identified the programs, we identified the dollar amount it was gonna take to keep those programs open. That was developed last, at the time where we had the most reasonable information from the state, as to what they were willing and what they were suggesting that we had. So, in January fifteen, then maybe there, it would be fantastic if January, well, they won't be working on January first, but if January second, the state says, hey, from January fifteen, this is what we'll do, this is what we want. They didn't do that last time.
But, so, here's, here's my, if, if the state dries up, and the funds dry up, then this county is gonna be responsible for fourteen thousand dollars for senior citizens. We'll be responsible in transit with a scale of approval of ten thousand dollars. If the health department upfront nineteen, or let's say thirteen thousand five hundred dollars. Daycare was fifty six thousand dollars. D S S, which were mandatory, were told, you will keep the doors open, it's, it's thirty four thousand dollars a month. And with this, that came total. So our obligations in, in health and human services, whether we want to or not, comes to forty four thousand three hundred dollars. Whether we want to or not, yes, sir. And then, W I G was paid for, and the state said, we're not gonna pay. Only state and unit that would not continue W I G's, the state of North Carolina. And you go from here and over there, you say, well, you know, we paid the head, we did this, that, and the other. Well, my recommendation is, and I think we need to start talking, covering it up the table, finding ourselves in that, everyone is to tell them, we're not gonna do it on any person. And they say, well, that won't work, that's the way we operate. Well, you need to operate this way, right? You forward us the funds, we have to wait another week, or two weeks. Because this is just not gonna work, because they did, they done us out of the drive, absolutely. State and North Carolina, county's out of the drive. And that's, you know, he's had small potatoes right there, that's one percent of our operating budget right there, for one month.
Yes, sir.
So, I seem a little ticked out by him, but we can't sit around and just let this thing go around again, not have a contingency on it. If we're gonna tell them, there's fathers working, families working, and they're not gonna have to work, these are kids, then you need to start finding out a plan, and we need to start telling them.
Yes, sir.
You know, if it comes to it, we're gonna have to decide about senior citizen programs, is that first to go? Just go ahead and lock it off, say, we're not gonna run wheels, wheels on wheels, we're not gonna feed you here, we're not gonna feed you, so what you have to do... So what I want to ask this board to do, I guess Greg we've already done it, is when we came up with a contingency plan, is to find a way that we can, if anything, soften them a little bit. It's gonna understand, is that we have to have a plan. That we're gonna say, do not just pull this up on people, and wake up one Monday morning, and find out you've got nowhere to take your kids, to go to your job. So, that's, that's what I want to recommend to us, if we can do that. Shell?
Uh, can me, can I see you and Mr. Eller outside for just one minute, please?
Really?
Really.
I have to adjourn this meeting?
Oh, we, are we in, well, we got the workshop?
No, the workshop's still going.
Okay, but in between the workshop and regular meeting, can I have about three minutes of your time?
You sure can, is it gonna be private?
Uh, yes.
Okay, all right, Shell, we'll do that, you gonna wait?
Yes.
Okay. We've got about twenty-five minutes.
Mike, if you, if you recall by... About my three years ago. The health department actually stood right there, and she would tell us all the grants that she could get. I knew she was gonna look, that employees, she was gonna work. Do you remember what I said to her?
Grant money's gone, so is the job.
Grant money's gone, and so is the job. This grant money, I appreciate every penny that we can get, but that's the way a separate decayed to death. They set this grant money here, put three people to work in one organization. Over a period of time, and it's, it's coming, because it cannot survive with the way it's going. I know that than anybody, that's got real common sense of it. They suck us to death, they pull this money, live or live, and when they pull it down, who does the responsibility call on? The taxpayers and the county to support that program. The grant's gone, we've got their employees, the taxpayers have to support. And I still stand with what I told Lisa Farm right there, as long as you can get grant money to put the bills right in the train, but today that's gone, and the train hasn't turned away, it's done.
Well, that all makes sense. And you know, from a human resource standpoint, you know, Kim, I don't know, I need to go back to that, you know, we do have a high job with grant funding. And that's the very thing Billy's saying, if this grant funded position, it disappears at the end of the day. What happens, we get people mixed in with physicians.
That was prior to my being in H R, see, I had no control over some departments.
That's true, see, there you go. State personnel there? Well, you can do that.
Any, any grant funded from that point that y'all took over was specified, grant funded, and it ended, as they were hired, it was...
Right.
Specified, grant funded, on their personnel record.
Now, that started what, three, three years?
When y'all started this board.
Three years, you know, on...
But there hasn't been any physicians that was hired under specifically grant funded.
Well, see, that's, coming from the public sector, the, you know, state sector itself for all those years, is that's the way it worked.
Right.
Once the money was gone, the position's gone.
Right.
I've been at the, the gone ends of those too.
And we've had some grants to come in, I think, up there that would help towards some programs where employees have assisted in it, but it's not been for a particular employee or position.
Right. Okay. But that's one thing, I mean, that's one thing that I wanted to bring up, and I hope we'll give consideration between, hopefully, when I'm before January, maybe before December, but it's winding down quick. Everybody thinks January fifteenth is the way out, it's not. You just think that I haven't paid it, so it's the way.
Don't mean...
No, it's not. And then February, just add a little pay, you know?
And it can hit us.
Yeah.
It, it can, I hope it doesn't.
I'm willing to argue that it's not fun, yeah.
I, I was thinking it can hit.
Well, Keith, you know, there, there were, there's, there's no way that we can say everything will be sunshine, I mean... And that may sound like an alarmist, but I, I'll be pro, I don't care to, I don't want us getting caught in that.
Well, that, that was originally, I said, if, if it's not, I figured, if they get things worked out at last man, I said, watch it, so they got it.
That's right. It's any way.
No, it's very good.
I kind of parade and both get, same time.
And then I wonder if it's not, right?
There's questions that can be asked, even in the daycare situation, I could feel, um, about working and non-working parents. I don't know if that's discriminatory, I mean, I, I think there are questions that need to be asked.
I agree with your staff, and you're gonna have staff like my sister, who can do all that.
Yeah, yeah, but I mean, you know...
I was talking about that too.
And looking at another point of view, if we finance one department, the other's gonna cry here, and bar you out, and is your financing this one, not financing this one?
But if we have universal employees that are taking applications, that are working universal applications here and there, you can combine, you know, as the state would be willing to. So there's, there's all kinds of, of bringing together, um, staff that you can do, and I think that's just a game plan, I, I think that you can come together with, and you can go ahead and start discussing plans.
Well, right, and see, aren't you on that Southwest, Southwest, uh...
The region partnership?
Region, we're taking partnership, and that might be a discussion to come up, because I know that my children, it was by pay, for pay, I mean, we didn't get subsidy because we're in there. But we had the service, we could pay for the service. But what happens is, there's not some subsidy, you can set it close, regardless from your ability to pay the money. So you might ask them about that in Southwest, because that's who turned them up into the best here today. And I think they're right in the region, and region A needs to have a plan, because that right there is almost fifty percent of what we're gonna have to pay out of that hundred twenty seven thousand dollars. That was, that was above beyond for staff that were required today, which is only forty four thousand. Because, um, it's important, I know, and, um, but you're right, I think it's a good point, there are those, the, the, they're all working parents, and they're gonna make that happen, but you see what happens to the subsidies then.
Right.
So, operating the center.
If we ask questions now, maybe we get the answers, or January, you know, there may be options.
Well, maybe we chase, or, sorry, that, that's got an answer. And it'll say to us that, you know, here we are, and I know we're probably the least budget-wise, I mean, our school system has more than a budget per county, but you know, still, we have obligations and services with that.
And they, and they may have grant funded organizations that are willing to step in and give them monies, um, to, to make sure that these programs are funded, with that, that's never been asked.
Right.
You know, they are grant organizations out there that will help children, and, and that we don't know anything about, um, if region A go, goes out and asks, just like, you know, the homeless children, Roy Hill, people like that. I mean, region A can get to those people more than we could ever, for the, for the working parents in the rural areas that need the extra help. Maybe, you know, that just may be a question that needs to be asked.
Well, I know, for example, transit or the conversation is gonna be, I don't know if it's something they can do on that in a way, but they have a thorough plan. They're at least gonna get the people on dialysis to work they need to go.
And she can do that.
And we sit here, and we see dollars and cents, if that's dialysis.
Yes.
Some of them three times a, or four weeks, four times a week, five times a week. Any of y'all have an idea how much it cost to run a D S S if we didn't get better with state money? Two million dollars. And you know what makes that serious? We're required by law by the services. But not if you want to. Well, hopefully, if it happens again, maybe in our federal there, and there's state, there would just be one or two of them around that, desperate for it. I hope so. Well, I assume it's a question, it's not in those kids. Well, I can play with it. Okay. That's about all I had, anybody else, I hope I monopolized everything here. But I hope we take some action on it. Right, we could have you back.
Good to be back.
Can we go ahead and get into the later here, and, um, see what's about, if anyone comes along, come back in? Yes, sir, I'm sorry, sir, yes, sir.
Y'all have identified a problem here. Whether this happens in January or not, the question is, what are you gonna do about the problem? It may come up again this time next year, so you got a whole year, maybe, to do something about it. So, what are you gonna do? I mean, y'all make the big bucks, okay? So you've gotta make the decision, but Billy's exactly right. Something, something's gotta be done, because the people in this county can't afford to pay more taxes with the economy like it is and the number of jobs here. So the only thing you can do is cut services. Some you've got to do. If there's a county program that duplicates a federal program, and you gotta do the federal program, that kinda tells you what you gotta do, and you gotta start now, instead of this happening again and saying, we gotta slice this off. Government ain't supposed to be everything to everybody. So, like Billy said, I mean, you got three new qualities. Not new now, but maybe you're gonna have two. So, get a contingency plan, so you don't get hit in the face with a wet cat again, and that one, your fault. But if it happens a second time, you know whose fault it is. And that's all I got to say. I don't, I, I don't envy the position y'all are in, but, uh, I'd just take the bull by the horn.
Well, you know, we did have a contingency for November, that was gonna be the next, I don't wanna use the word phase, but it had to be the next move.
Yeah.
Because, you know, there are just things that you have to, you have to make those decisions, you just say, this has got, you know, we can't afford this.
Yeah, I agree with you, I back you up a hundred percent on that.
And that's the way that, that it operates, and I don't hate to call it a triage kind of thing, but it's kinda like you have to let go what you can let go of. And, um, and you wanna try and keep it as normal as possible for those services that are essential, there's a good word.
Dialysis is one of them, that's why for that.
Absolutely, it is, and I'm glad the trans folks looked at it that way, but they, they have money, they said, we'll go firm, we'll cut down the number of drivers, we'll cut down this, that, and the other, and then be able to do that. But that kinda thing, that's kinda thinking, and you know, that's when you say, well, you know, they're in your arms, but I don't care. If you've gotta have, you have to have somehow or the other, because I used to think that we could depend on flow of dollars, you know, since we're paying in the yin yang, paying it in, at the tune of two hundred billion dollars a month. And when payments are coming out, federal government only twenty feet a month, that doesn't add up, oh, every day? You have to save eight billion dollars ahead every time, and what happens to that each day?
Having a plan is not being an alarmist, that's called management. And, and a, a plan for the future. And if you start cutting down, you'll have a bigger pot of money to pull out of if this happens this time next year. So, you know, I, I back up, looking at every program and slicing, it's just the way it is, hard times.
Yeah, it really is, you have something, sir?
Yeah, where do we stand on this three quarters of a million dollars in back taxes? Are we taking action and putting lean on people? Yes, we have, I got the first, I guess, I got the first, uh, poll out, that's gonna be headed paper, probably next week.
We've already taken in over a hundred thousand, is it better than that? I, I don't have the exact bad numbers, but, uh, it's, you know, there's been a substantial dollar amount, uh... I think we've got, we were cooked about a hundred and something thousand dollars.
You know, I haven't heard, I come every meeting, I haven't heard a thing about it.
Yeah, we put that, put that...
I notice the last five months, I've never seen the county attorney here, are we still paying for a county attorney?
As their services require, yes. Anything else?
I wanna address something just real quick, and as to what Mr. Kelly said, and I, I will say this as an, as a tribute to, uh, the staff that was in place before I got here, you know, and this board. Saving money, building fund balance, all of those things were done in order to help cover times like we potential, potentially had ahead of us. So many times, whenever actions that happen at the federal level like that, we're, we're the last to know what the bottom line effect is gonna be on us. And we're the last to know to say, hey, you gotta keep the doors open even though you're not getting paid for it, which, to me, is an unreasonable request by the state of North Carolina to say to us. So, in developing a plan, and deciding what services that, that we can provide, and how much they're gonna be provided, was, let's take, for instance, our senior center, which is almost entirely federally funded. And those federal funds come in a budget, well, because we all know how the federal government works, if you don't spend it, you lose it. So every year, we're trying to max out the amount of dollars that, and we have to provide as much as we can for our senior center, our senior citizens here, for those dollars. And then, those programs, you know, to cut a program here or there, well, the only time we can really address that sometimes is in, is in the, uh, beginning and upcoming on one of those processes, say, hey, we may, today may be a buy lunch day. You know, we're not bringing a meal today. And those, those type of plans, things like that, they, they've been put in place, and they're ready to go. So many times, we have to almost wait until, you know, the stores have rolled, start rolling some of those things out, but I appreciate your point, it's very... I appreciate your point, it's very well taken. But a lot of the the planning and the ability to even do, to cover the month of October is is a credit to this board, Director Garland, Kim, and our administration staff, everyone involved to have a fund balance so we can manage that.
Can I make a point too on this, where I was saying, it's real important, you don't cut, I mean, you wanna, you wanna work as efficiently as you can, don't get me wrong. But when we start pulling spending down, especially in some of these programs before the, as Greg was saying, the storms at the door, then we're really fouling ourselves up on our indirect costs. Because we are able, when we, when we set a spending level, and believe you may, it's it's trimmed. But when we set a spending level and we drop that spending level down below, then the next fiscal year, we do what? Kinda like a look back calculation on what it's cost the county. The general services, central services gets allocated out to all these departments that draw down federal and state funding. And part of the funding that we draw down is the indirects. And so we really found ourselves up on our indirects this last year because we, and we had to do it. We had to take a furlough, um, year before last of twelve days for each employee. And that that furloughing has cost us about sixty thousand dollars this year in the direct. So you wanna plan in place and then you gotta have it ready to pull the trigger uh, when the time comes to pull the trigger, but you don't wanna pull that trigger too quickly. Otherwise, you'll cost yourself in the long run. So we gotta be careful there.
Any other comments? If not, we'll go ahead and adjourn the work, the work session and we'll try and sharpen, sharpen the house clock.